Okay, first thing that we do is approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, issues, additions to the agenda as presented? So, now I got a motion by Rick Styler, and I will second that to approve the agenda as presented. So if there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved, five to zero. Next, we will open the floor up for a public hearing on our 2020 budget and property tax, truth and taxation hearing. Now Mike, are you going to do your presentation, then we will open it up for comments, or?
That works for you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, and welcome to those of you that are here tonight to hear a little bit about our 2020 budget and the corresponding property tax revenue that supports that portion of the budget. Can I just see by a show of hands how many of you are here for that? One, two, three maybe? Hopefully you picked up one of the packets that we had back there. If you're interested, it's also on the city's website, so the people can take a look at that. The council gives me one opportunity a year to come up and kind of go through this presentation. Normally they give me 45 minutes to 60 minutes, I'm going to try to cut it down to maybe about 20 minutes. You won't get all of what's in the packet, I'm going to give you most of what I kind of think are some of the highlights in there, but there's more information in the packet that I hope you find interesting. For those of you that received your 2020 truth and taxation notices from either La Sura County or Scott County, one of the things that it does not do at this point, and that we're not here to address, is any perceived change in valuation of property. That's handled in the spring by either of the two counties, and so that isn't a part of what our discussion here is tonight. Our discussion here tonight is to talk about the corresponding tax levy and the dollars that the city generates through the imposition of public property taxes to help fund budgetary operations, and how that's changing from 2019 to 2020. And let me, I changed up my presentation a little bit this year because of what we sent out in September, that you received the notice on in November, is that from that preliminary notice that went out to what we have tonight, bottom line difference is the preliminary levy was reduced by about $215,000, or the tax rate went down about 2.73%, or we decreased the levy about 64%. The reason being is that the council spent October and November going through the budget. Preliminary, when we set the levy back in September, we have to set it at a certain level that we can't exceed, we can only bring it down, and through all the review that the council did, is that they made a substantial change primarily to a number of the capital items and some of the operating costs. So whatever you saw in that notice is not going to be what it is from the city, that will come down, like I said, as we cut the levy by about 64%, or about $215,000. So that will have a material impact to the preliminary levy that you saw in that notice as it relates to the city. So that's the one good news. And when you take a look at that, what is causing with our levy going up about just under $120,000 this year, it's really coming from a couple of different areas contained within the general fund. If I'm not careful here, I'm going to forget, there's a slide that I just talked about, but forgot to bring up, we decreased it by about 64%. Where we're impacting changes from 2019 to 2020 is in the general fund, it's up about 119,000 or 3.8%. Two areas, one is employee personnel cost for wages, like a PR, health insurance, and the second part of that, which is kind of the bigger part of those numbers, is a change in hardware, technology upgrades, software upgrades, and going to a contract for ongoing managed IT services, that if you're interested, stick around long enough, I think agenda item number six or five, is where we'll be talking about what we're going to be seeing from our IT proposals that we took. There's no proposals change in the golf levy contained within the general fund, that's been the same now for about 10 years. There is no change in our debt service fund levy, no change in the EDA levy, so in aggregate, the total levy is up about 119,000 or 2.86%. Originally, the property tax levy was up 8%, so you can see we've made quite a reduction trying to get here to tonight's meeting. When you take a look at it, and it's sometimes easier to break it down from a visual perspective, is what does that look like for every dollar that you pay in city property taxes, where does that go? When you take a look at this, about 76 cents on the dollar, Mike, it doesn't show for all, about 76 cents on that dollar goes to fund general fund budgetary items, from general government, public safety, the public works, culture and recreation, unallocated and then transferred, and you can see where those allocations are. About 76 cents, or 3/4 of every dollar, go to fund those expenses. 23 cents is for debt service, which is principal and interest payments on outstanding city bonds, all of the work that we've done over the years, in recent years, to pay for all of the street improvements that's in the street replacement projects, the construction of the fire station that was built here now 10 years ago, and the city's share of the Phillips Parkway 55-plus housing project is what we have for debt service, or 23 cents on the dollar, and then about one penny of that goes to fund the economic development authority. So that gives you as good a breakdown as I can give you to succinctly or pretty simply tell you where does your local city property tax dollar go, that's kind of where it's headed. When you take a look at where is the city at in regards to our property tax rate, that looking to 2020, we're expecting to see that rate to be able to go down from 57.5, down to about 54.55. That will be the lowest rate that we've had in the last 11 years, or the lowest since 2009. This is seven years in a row now that we continue to decrease our local property tax rates, and primarily that's beneficial, and you'll see a slide later on as to where our tax base has gone, that's been a biggest, that's one of the bigger pieces that's enabled to have us continue to bring that down. And when you take a look at it, where is the city as a percentage of the city, the county, the school, the special taxing districts, we account for about 45% of the dollar that you pay in all of those combined taxes, about 45% of that comes to the city. And that gives you a bit of a graphic of what I was just describing, of how we've been working since 2013. 2013 was the peak year here, that we have our highest property tax rate, and that's now been declining or coming down for the last seven years. So we've moved in the right direction, I believe. Some notable facts here, and again, I'm just going to try to touch on a couple of these, I'm not going to go through all of them, that general fund budget is up at 5.76 million, it's up about 198,000 and 4%. The preliminary levy was reduced, like I said, by about 64%. The tax base for 2020 is up to 7.88 million dollars, which represents an increase of about $621,000, or about 8.5% over 2019. And I'll show you a little bit of that in some of the construction pieces that we've had occurred, that we're picking up and seeing that attributes to some of this growth. There's some more highlights in there, but those are a few that I'm just going to touch on for now. Some of the accomplishments here in 2019, and if you were here, and I don't think most of you were, at the 5:30 special meeting, we went through and heard the update from Bruce Reimer, our utilities general manager, talked about some of the accomplishments in the electric arena. These are a few of the other ones that, again, I think I've got about eight or nine of them that I've listed for the year, and you can kind of take a look at going through those. One is we continue to work on the 2020 Main Street reconstruction, on the design plan review and acquisition of temporary easements for the project right-of-way for that construction project, which we hope to see here in 2020. On the temporary easements, we had to go out and acquire 121 temporary easements this year in order to assemble the right-of-way that was needed to do that project. Couple of the other construction projects that stood out is the rework, the replacement and upgrades on the former Commonwealth 37, construction of the two new roundabouts on Columbus Avenue, at both 12th Street Northeast and 7th Street Northeast, and the mill and overlay, and then I do remiss if I didn't talk about all the work that the utilities crew did in putting in all the new lighting on that roadway corridor, that really has brightened that roadway up for the benefit of the public. The evaluation on our IT infrastructure, and hopefully later on in the meeting tonight, a recommendation and approval on the preferred option on our alternatives there that we're going to be working on in 2020. So those are just a few of them. Here's where we start to get into some of the pictures of what's occurred in the residential construction. 2019, we've had 22 residential units, and if you discount the good rolls that we had both in '16 and '17, '17 is distorted a little bit by the 91 units for the Praha Village over on 10th Avenue there, that's what enabled us to hit what was considered the second highest number of housing units in the city's history, so that was a really big year, and 2016 (inaudible) out of those 53, I want to say, Kim, what was it, 32 townhomes?
Eighteen of them was townhomes.
Eighteen were townhomes, and so if you take a look at 2012, '13, '14, '15, and then '18, '19, is we've been averaging about 22 residential units a year, with the exception of the outliers there for '16 and '17, and so we continue to have ongoing growth in the residential housing market. Public improvements, I've touched on a little bit with 7th Streets and the local roadways and the roundabouts hall, I think public improves, we've received a lot of good feedback over the years since those were completed. Probably one of the more challenging construction years, I think our city engineer and staff would indicate that probably didn't go quite the way we would have liked. It didn't help that we have what the latest year on record here in 2019, which impacted the contractor and the subcontractors. All in all, I think we ended up with a good project, it just wasn't probably the preferred way we would like to have gotten there. On the economic development front, we've had a number of local business expansions, Rayth Auto moved into town to develop Rayth Auto out in the auto repair shop, out in the industrial park, he's moved into town and he's provided the testimonial to our city staff that since day one, he's essentially doubled his business by moving into town and moving into the industrial park. So he is quite pleased with what he's experiencing, and has found the move to be extremely beneficial to him and his family, so we're glad to have him in the industrial park. Electromed added, whoop, Electromed added on an expansion in the industrial park area on the north end of their building. The Mayo Clinic rehab services consolidated a number of the different rehab services that they had located around town, those have all been consolidated into the former fitness center. Not that anybody has been into this new store, but the new winter store and the west end of Coburn's, they provided a marvelous new facility compared to the space that they were allocated on the east side of that building. And then another project that was one of those quiet ones that you don't think a lot about, but our staff spent a lot of time working with the owners and representatives with Jeff Dalzer's car dealership, dealing with annexation, utility extension, and the Ford expansion. And when you take a look at the capital investment that has been made, and that they're now located in the corporate city limits, is like going out and finding a new business and bringing them to town, that they're now contained within the city's tax base, so that's a major addition to the community. Some of the 2020 project goals and issues, again, probably too many to mention, but major at the top of the list in the forefront is our 2020 reconstruction of Main Street from the intersection of Highway 19 and 21. The state will be having us do asphalt overlay two blocks west to begin with, and then we'll start at the intersection and move in an easterly direction all the way to 7th Avenue Southeast, just under one mile, building mall to building mall, all the way down to replace water, sanitary, and storm sewer infrastructure. Those utilities, when we go to repairing those and replacing those this next year, that infrastructure will be almost 100 years old by the time we get to it, so it's some of the last oldest infrastructure that we have in town, and we've tried to work very closely in the planning and coordination of this project with MINDAT, so that we as a city did not have to incur the replacement of that underground piping, and then to incur the cost of the replacement of the state highway on top of it. Then a number of years ago, they would prefer to have committed just an asphalt overlay in either 2017 or 2018, but we've been working with them now since, I think where we started way back in 2015, to try to get to the point that we can do a reconstruction project together so that we can avoid having to pick up the cost of those items. The technology is another piece, that with what we've got occurring there, our system was kind of built on a patchwork quilt basis, and so we've gone through some strategic planning, specked out new features for hardware and software, and those proposals are in, and we'll be taking action on them a little bit later. More on the left, but if I'm going to get through this as quickly, I'm going to have to move. This is just starting to show a little bit about the breakdown of the general fund budget, and I'm just going to say, it's at about 5 million, up above 4%. The majority of the revenue that covers that is about 64% of our general fund revenue comes from local property tax, 18% comes from local government aid from the state of Minnesota, so combined about 82% of our revenues to fund most of the general fund operations come from those two specific revenue sources. Here's our LGE picture, this year we are seeing a slight increase of about 53,000, or about 6.2%. On the expense side, the area or the category where we spend the greatest share of our general fund dollars is down in public safety, which covers police, fire, billing, inspection, emergency management, and animal control, a little over $2 million, or 40% of the general fund budget. And then the second largest area is public works, including engineering, public works, streets and street lighting, about $1.1 million, or about 22% of the budget. This just graphically kind of shows you where we've gone revenues and expense-wise. Generally have always, generally have always been able to maintain positive revenues over spursments unless it's planned, otherwise we've chosen to eat into the fund balance to cover any specific projects or cost elements in any of those particular years, so you can see it's matched quite closely. Second area that encompasses property taxes is in the debt service, and that totals, and has been at about $1 million here for the last five years. EDA, a little tough to see, but that's a budget of about $50,000, of which 50,000 comes from the property tax. This is the graph I was telling you about earlier, that when you take a look at why we've been able to bring our property tax rate down, is it been the change of what's happening with our tax base? And you can see, we hit a low point in 2013, a little over $5 million, and now we're up to about $7.9 million, and this year specifically, we're looking at going up about 8.5%. Looking ahead to next year for 2020 budget and 2021, we're expecting to see continued growth all through that time period as well. So we're really pleased to see that we have about seven consecutive years of growth in the local tax base. When you take a look at specifically what has that meant over the years here, and relates to the total levy, and how has it changed this year with the revisions that the council made, is the total levy is going to be up about 2.86%. And when you look at the last 10 years' worth, the average percentage increase over the last 10 years has averaged about a 1.9% increase, or just under 2%. And so we're up a little bit higher than that for the coming year, but all in all, when you look back from 2010 to the present, like I said, we're at about an average percentage increase of about 1.9, or when you look at that in actual sold dollars, the change in the average annual change, it's about 2.1. So it depends on whether you look at the percentage change or the average annual dollar change, it can be a little different under either one of those scenarios. We always hear a little bit about some of the concerns from certain individuals as it relates to homeowner concerns or renter concerns on the property tax. We've identified three of the state property tax relief programs that are available, one for homeowners, if there's a home state credit refund, two on the rendered property tax refund, or third, senior citizens at a deferral. We can help direct people to those, but basically they're available, and information is contained on the department website, should anybody need or have access or concerns to look into that. That's as simply as I said, I was going to try to do it in about 20 minutes, and I think I have a bubble brain on target for that. I have to thank the staff, all of the department heads, Patty is the finance director, and Barb and Leah, and I'm an administrative coordinator and accounting technician, along with, like I said, all the department head we have sitting here tonight, that have helped assemble and put this budget together. And so without I stand for any questions. Following tonight, the council's intent here tonight is an informational presentation with a public hearing. We won't adopt either the budget or the property tax until the next meeting, and that would be on December 16th.
All right, so we're down here. Thank you, Mike. You ran through that fairly quick.
(inaudible)
Take a couple deep breaths. Does anyone on the council, I know the council has been involved in going through the nuts and bolts, so I don't see that there will be a lot of questions from us, but I guess I would entertain if there's any questions from the public regarding what you just heard, or something you don't understand, you're more than welcome to come to the podium, state your name and your address, and we need you to get on TV. So, do you have a comment?
Good evening, my name is David Schultz, I live at 201 First Avenue Southeast, along with my wife. And what brought me to this meeting tonight is on my property tax statement. It indicates that there is a meeting tonight at the city hall, city council chambers, and I had hoped that this meeting might be giving you an opportunity to address why my property taxes went up 62.18% on the statement. I'm not sure if I'm at the right place in that, I thought I would start here.
Let me take a look at it, see if I can try to answer.
What county is he in, Mike?
I'm in La Sura County.
One of the Probably the first major thing I see is that there's a change in your estimated market valuation from about 108,000 in 2019, to about 155,000 in 2020.
Yes, sir, I saw that also.
So in that, and if you heard my opening remarks, that one of the things I can't address tonight, and that is taken care of or addressed at the county, and typically when you receive your property tax statements in the spring, attached with that typically is a notice from the county about the valuation process, that if there's a change, it identifies the meetings, they hold what they call an open book hearing down at the county, where you can come in and go through and talk through about the valuation change, and then if there's still a disagreement, then you have a right to appeal that up ultimately to the county commissioners. But that's the first thing that I see changing, and the major item is a change in your residential value, that either you constructed something new onto your property.
I have folders and pictures and everything, I just need to know where to take them.
And I can help you, get you directed, but you've had nearly a 50% increase in your valuation on your property, so that's what's really driving the majority change on your tax side.
And that's the discussion that I need to find out where to have.
Yep, and I can get that for you, if you can give me your telephone number, I can call you and catch up with you.
They're having a meeting on the 17th, right, based on this notice?
La Sura County Board?
La Sura County is, but again, what I'm saying, what's driving most of his changes on all three, is that the valuation change, to really have had any impact on this this year for 2019, pay 2020, is he would have had to have showed up last spring
Yeah.
In front of the county.
I know from my personal experiences, as when I got my notice last year, I did call the city, or the county assessor, and they did say that La Sura County in the city of New Craig was probably going to have an average of 8% to 10% increase in market value, and that was due to, they've been undervalued by state statute, you have to be within 95% to 105% of the market value, and they didn't have enough comparable sales, but they finally did get caught up on that, so I know just for the fact that that went up, you know, probably between 8% to 10% alone, just citywide.
I'm hoping for that opportunity to disagree with them.
Did you have something constructed at your property?
We had our house insulated, and the things that have been along with having our house insulated.
And that was, but you didn't construct that on any additional square footage or anything?
No, we had to peel off the outside of the house to get between the studs to spray in foam, and then the house was recited over the top of that, and that's the extent of the work other than something electrical, because the electrical couldn't be entombed in the spray foam.
But I can get him directed to the appropriate county staff to talk to as to why the significant change in valuation.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
(inaudible).
Thank you.
Good evening, Gary Whiters, 1406 Ninth Street Southeast. My question is on the debt service. When, here a couple of years ago, utilities bought out Minnesota Valley Electric Park in the southeast part of town, is that part of this debt service? That's handled separately?
No, that there's absolutely nothing within the property tax levy debt, that is I explain, that covers all of our street reconstruction projects that we've done over the years, it includes the payment on the principal and interest on the bonds on the construction of the fire station back in 2009, and it pays for a certain portion of the housing project on Phillips Square Apartments, no Phillips
Parkway.
No, Phillips Square Apartments over here, so there is nothing with any of the acquisition of the additional 20% of the increase in the customer base that has anything related to any debt obligation on electrical.
Well, I would say the 2.86 is a lot better than the 8% you sent out originally, but again, it's still, if you look at what social security is being increased for next year, and what people's wages are going up, keep a sharp pencil, please, that's all I can ask. Thank you.
Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion, myself, I'm begging to ask, if there's any other comments, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the public hearing is closed. And as Mike mentioned, this part of the agenda was for informational And as Mike mentioned, this part of the agenda was for information only. We will be adopting the final budget at our December 16 meeting, so you're more than welcome to come to that too. Okay, thank you. Next, Mike or Ken, are you going to take agenda item number two?
From the planning commission meeting last week, we have a variance request from Chart for directional signs. As everybody knows, they have a probably 55 acre campus east of 21, north of Seventh Street Northwest. Multiple buildings, make truck deliveries multiple times a day throughout there, so they have a lot of traffic in and out of the site. One thing they want to accomplish is better directional signage for trucks into and around their various buildings and various properties on the 55 acres. And they believe the new signs that they're proposing, six new signs, three along Seventh Street Northwest, and three along First Avenue Northwest will make that easier for the truck owners. I do want to note that three of the existing signs that are along Seventh Street Northwest are currently in former Crown Road 37 right of way, which is now City Street. So this will remove those three signs out of the right of way and put them right on, basically they want to have the directional signs right on the lot line. So this will better that condition where they're currently in the right of way, and then place the six new ones right on the right of way line. And staff actually agrees with this due to the fact that it will help delay traffic for going into kind of the north end of First Avenue Northwest, or there's some residential homes there. Make sure that trucks get where they need to go without confusion and unnecessary trips in traffic in the area. So again, the planning commission did review their meeting on the 20th of November. We did have one public comment received from Leonard Modder. He happens to live directly across the street from both the post sign number five, which I'll show here in a minute, it's right across from his driveway. He was just concerned that if some of the traffic was going north of his driveway, that the sign would block view of that. And in fact, no, it will not, it will be out of the site triangle. And then we actually noted, and chart staff noted, that some of the trucks will not be traveling north of that fifth sign on First Avenue Northwest, so we don't have a concern with their view being blocked of other vehicles coming in and out of that driveway access right in front of his home. So that was really the only public comments we had at the meeting. The planning commission did recommend approval on a four to zero vote, and all the conditions, or excuse me, the findings are contained in the resolution, which is in your packet here tonight. So just going to walk through the signs. So sign number one, right on the corner of 21 and Seventh Street there, again, that's set right up at the front property line from both Truck Avenue 21 and Seventh Street. And again, this is to kind of set the tone for trucks coming in from the corner on the highway, get them going in the right direction, there are multiple buildings. These are the key addresses that are noted on the sign. Moving along to sign two and sign three, here's one of the signs in the right of way, there's actually three of these currently, you can see another one in the background there. These will go away, get out of the city right of way, which will obviously better situation than they have right now, and put some behind their fence, which is right on the property line. And again, sets it up at a elevation high enough to be visible and viewable from the semi truck traffic and get them where they need to go. Moving along to signs four and five, these again are right along the right of way. The fence in these cases are actually located behind the right of way. The right of way is just a few heat band curb along First Avenue here, so that's why the fence is located where it is here. But again, just trying to get those trucks directed where they need to go. This is a sign that Mr. Modder thought out as being concerned about if somebody's were traveling on First Avenue, if they would see other vehicles heading out of here, and basically noted they're out of the site triangle that's required on this corner, and there will actually not be any semi traffic heading north of that driveway. Really, the only traffic going that way is an occasional semi truck, not regular drill deliveries, and then mostly employee traffic that go to the large tank manufacturing facilities parking lot on the north end of First Avenue. And then finally, sign number six at the very end of First Avenue there, just replacing that one there, and this is again a sign for the visitor and employee who could entrance on that very north end of the site. This map, I don't think it showed up when I went through earlier, so the, it does not want to show. All right. Let's see what happened. Oh, there it was. All right, there are the locations of the six signs, you can see three along Seventh Street Northwest, and then three along First Avenue Northwest. And again, that was an unanimous four to zero vote on recommendation, the planning commission to forward for your consideration tonight.
Okay, anyone on the council have a question for Ken, regarding this hearing?
The size of the sign, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to make a motion, and you had a question.
Is that always a question? The signs depicted on the pictures, that representative of the whole?
Yes, it's the scale, correct.
Are there any variations in the variance size?
No, they're not looking for any variation from the, or variance from the sign, no, they're allowed actually up to 250 square feet of signs along each front there, so they're not, basically not.
The mayor was wondering, are the bolstered people old?
I believe they'll put them on a bolster. Appreciate it.
That's all.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the sign variance report.
Motion by Sean Ryan, second by Rick Seiler. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye. Aye, in the opposition? Okay, that's five to zero. Ken, are you going to take the next item?
I will. So the next item on the agenda is a petition, a citizen's petition for EAW on the proposed QuickTrip development at 101 First Avenue Northeast. On November 20th, the city received a citizen's petition for an environmental assessment worksheet for the proposed QuickTrip development at 101 First Avenue Northeast. This would include, as proposed, a 7,800 square foot convenience store with attached 3,000 square foot car wash and then associated diesel and gasoline fueling canopies. The petition by the process has to be submitted to the Environmental Quality Board. They had to have 100 signatures on that petition, and they have that. And the Environmental Quality Board determined that the petition was complete, and that was then forwarded to us on that November 20th date. In the letter that we received from the Environmental Quality Board, they noted that the City of New Craig is a responsible government unit, and that we are to make a determination on the need for the EAW pursuant to the rules that govern the Environmental Quality Board and how they operate. And then it is noted also, until this determination is made, no final action can be taken on the QuickTrip project. On the November 20th meeting, the planning commission did have a public hearing on the planning and the conditions permit for the development, and that same day is when we received the petition, so that's why it's not being forwarded to you here tonight for final consideration, because you have to take action on this petition before that. When we received the petition and the letter from the EQB board, we did forward that to our city engineer and city attorney to review the petition and review the rules for environmental review. And ultimately, it was noted, per Minnesota rules, 4410.4600, subpart 10, that the project is actually exempt from environmental review further rules because we are a fourth class city, which is basically a city under 10,000 people, and then the project itself, the commercial project, did not exceed 50,000 square feet of floor area. And we do want to point out, and our attorney wanted to point out, that typically a city can require a discretionary EAW. However, in this case, because it is small enough, it's fallen out of the exempt category, we cannot order a discretionary EAW. It's actually prohibited by the rules, so even if you would want to, we are prohibited from doing that. So ultimately, we do have resolution in the packet here for your consideration tonight that would make the determination that the project is exempt from environmental review. I do want to note, and I hope the council have the opportunity to read through the petition and any of the concerns in there, I do plan to obviously address those, and that's one thing our Derek Deish from SCH noted in his review as well, is even though we're not required to do the review, I want to make sure that we have the thoughts and concerns addressed in the petition as best we can, and we will be sure to do that before this is forwarded back to the council for review, or anticipating it'll probably be on December 16th, unless you have another thought on that process. But again, the action we need tonight is to, per recommendation of the city engineers permit, our city attorneys, to determine the development is exempt from environmental review, but that certainly does not end the review of the project. We still have the planning CP that have to come before you and have full review and evaluation.
When do you expect that, then?
Like I said, unless you have thoughts, and otherwise, we have tentatively scheduled that for December 16th, our next council meeting.
So resolution prepared by the attorney?
Yes.
So basically, in a nutshell, there's really nothing that we can do.
Not under the environmental review rules. Now, certainly things can be addressed as conditions under the conditions permit, just it can't be done under the guise of the EAW process.
What's the cost on that, even if we were to do it?
An environmental assessment worksheet? Oh, it's been a few years. Last time we did this for the Walmart project that never happened, that was a discretionary EAW that the council ordered. I want to say that was upwards of about $25,000.
And, well, that was more than $1,000. Can I ask you what the difference between denying that QuickTrip and denying Walmart is?
Square footage.
Square footage. Walmart fit in category. It wasn't mandatory on the Walmart project, but it was larger than 50,000 square feet, or it could be discretionary.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Well, as the planning rep for the council, I just wanted to say that QuickTrip was very amendable to their concerns, including adding a second fence along Drainage Pond, planting trees in a certain area that would probably help disperse some of the fumes that they were worried about, and they were very accommodating, so I just wanted to make that known.
And I think I would still like to walk through the items in the petition that are mentioned and make sure that everybody's aware of that when we go through the review of the council. So certainly we'll have an opportunity to address those again, and I would hope that Mary's Milestones and Chantel that submitted the petition would like to further walk through that as well, so we can make sure that we're not missing anything.
Out of my own curiosity, have we received any complaints or concerns with the QuickTrip that is currently in operation?
No, no.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Make a motion to approve the resolution as it's presented.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Bruce Wolf, second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, in the opposition? Okay, passes. So when is the next planning commission meeting?
We next meet on the 18th of December.
So are you planning to come to the 16th?
It's already been to the planning commission.
Oh, okay, so you were just waiting for this action?
Yeah, we're privy to taking action once the petition was filed, final action, I should say.
Okay, well, it'd be good to hear how those concerns are addressed.
Yep.
Thank you. Chris, second, you're up, you have item number four, the 2019, some additional work orders or change orders?
Yes.
Changing the retention.
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the city council. Items for your consideration, there's one resolution directing modification of just a construction contract by change orders three, four, and five, and then a recommendation consideration for reduction of retention from 5 percent to 1 percent. Just a quick explanation, again, it's in the staff report, but change order number three, if you recall, we did bring, we had three previous change orders that were brought before the council earlier. The current one before you, change order number three, is for additional costs related to poor and unexpected soil conditions during the sanitary sewer installation on Third Avenue Northwest. That is that segment of sanitary sewer that we installed between the railroad tracks and flip side along Third Avenue in preparation of next year's project. And it really was a kind of a surprise of unexpected on our end. It probably had to do with, the soils obviously being poured out in that area, but that sewer main, as Mike had alluded to, that's some of the oldest main, it was put in 100 years ago, where they built the trench was about three feet wide, and all remaining soils that were there have been sitting there for 100 years. And when they get installed now, they, there's a lot more trench opened up, the soils get disturbed, and we, I think we about lost some semi trucks after it first got backfilled and stuff, so we had to take some drastic measures and reinforce that. Had we known it was there, we would have been doing something similar to what we ended up having to do in the end, so. Amount of that change order was significant, it's about $30,649, and that would be a cost that would be really carried by the sanitary sewer fund. Change order number four, pretty simple, and it's related to pavement marking removal. Most of that, when we built the roundabouts, most of the pavement was being removed, and it was oversight that, there's some pavement that was staying in place, it still had pavement markings that didn't fit, it was for the proposed design, and we did not have a pay item for that, and had to get a pricing from the contractor and have that, to have those removed so it could be restripped. Change order number five, if you're familiar with the South Roundabout, it's quite a bit bigger than the North Roundabout, and we started, we had some discussions internally, and with staff, and looked at an opportunity to maybe do some type of color contrast, and then got a pricing quote from the contractor and elected to have some color contrast replaced in the center island, and it'll be similar to some of the color that we're at least considering and proposing for next year's project as well. So give us an opportunity to look and see how that color contrast might compare, et cetera. So that was change order number five. Total amount of all the change orders of three, four, and five is $34,411.16. We still are in negotiation with the contractor on a couple of items, some things that we agree with, that they are due some additional funding, so we are going to be back for at least probably actually two change orders. One item is, another item we're still in disagreement on and are working through with that. Both of those change orders will involve some or most significant funding from the county, and so we'll be reviewing that with the county as well as we reach an agreement with the contractor. So we'll be back with at least two additional change orders for work that had to be done on County Road 37. I guess, any questions on, I guess, the change orders themselves?
Well, $30,000, such a jaw drop, I mean, when I seen it as a construction worker, that's extremely high. How did that happen?
Well, again, it was, if you're familiar with the area, it's a gravel road, it's been there forever, we're replacing sewer main where sewer main was, and so typically you would expect, you're replacing, you're taking out the initial, the original trench, and you're putting it back again, typically it would go back, it would not be an issue. Obviously, we found different, what we didn't expect to be there. And again, after the fact, you go, well, it probably had to do with how it was originally constructed, it wasn't constructed, you know, wide.
It was just so obvious, and one would have thought that before you'd been at the job, or that that would have been already on there.
Yeah, well, we didn't. Again, in hindsight, we did not do any soil borings on that area. Had we done that, we would have done something different. We would have probably spent this or more, because we would have been a little more proactive on what we were going to have to do for soil correction, but we had to do something. If you, if anybody saw that area over there, you know, a bomb had gone off, and wondered what was going on over there. So we basically had to do subcut, put in what we call GeoGrid, and then put gravel in. The nice thing is, is they still have a stockpile of gravel from County Road 37, and obviously they were going to haul it away, so we basically got the material, we had to pay to perform to place it, but we didn't basically pay for material to be brought to the site. to the site.
Right, so that's all labor doing?
Yeah, common excavation, GeoGrid, and placement of the aggregate base.
Okay, way too, because that was what I thought, maybe the materials of replacing that soil is what drove the price up, but you're saying that wasn't the case, that it was law-labored?
Yeah, I think in hindsight, if we didn't, again, know what we're going to get into, we probably would have looked at doing something different, but it probably would have involved something a lot more costly, but probably be a lot more permanent, for this is not necessarily something we're going to be able to utilize if we redo Third Avenue someday in the future. Third Avenue, we've been kind of sitting on not knowing how that area's going to redevelop. It may go back, it's more like a, kind of a drive, a parking lot entrance than an actual road, but again, it's still, we just don't know. Because there's some right-of-way issues over there along the railroad tracks, et cetera, how wide we can build that road in the future. So we just, we really hadn't planned to do anything with it at this time, and really the intent long-term was to do something when that area redevelops, that whole parcel owned by the city.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Chris, with these change orders and the other two that we approved, and possible, I don't know how much we're talking, are we under budget, are we over budget, or what's the end?
We're over budget from what was initially bid, but there are, again, we plan for contingencies, so we're, I know Mike and I had discussions early on after the bid, how much contingency to have. I felt we probably didn't need as much for the type of project, and I think he was a little more conservative, so we're, you know, we're working through the numbers to see exactly where we're at, but I don't know if you have any more to add?
Between what we have for contingency in the actual construction project, and with the little bit that I picked up in the rounding and the bonding, a little bit for the project, we'll have enough to cover it.
Yeah, but, yeah, and some of, again, some of the costs that are coming up, majority of those are actually county share costs, and they've been informed that these are coming as well, so.
Any other questions for Chris?
Yes. Do you feel that colored concrete added value to the amount?
Well, it's definitely more costly. I think it, it, I think, I think it needed something done there, and we had, we had talked about, you know, should we look at a more, more traditional island center, and ultimately decided, no, that wasn't really appropriate, because it, it wasn't quite large enough, but it felt like it was such an expanse, we needed to do something to break it up. I guess it, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, if you drive through it and look at it, I guess it's open to judgment, I guess.
Thanks for asking, Bruce. I was going to ask the same question, you know, that...
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the whole cost of the project, the whole cost of concrete, it looks like a lot, but it really wasn't in terms of the percentage of the whole, the whole thing.
And I forget, the Main Street design, are they similar in size to that one?
The one, Main Street, a little closer to the North Roundabout, so quite a bit smaller than the, the one at Seventh and Columbus is quite bigger. It's almost like a medium size, it's a little bit smaller than the ones on the east and west side of town, but not mini like we're going to see in Main Street or up by the high school. So the part of the cost with, is, with that colored concrete is, ironically, it's, obviously it's the dime that they add, but they also have to wash the truck and everything after they're done, so it's some of the labor involved in dealing with the truck that had to deliver that colored concrete.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I think we'll do it in, well, we'll do the first eight, and again, that's it, probably, yeah?
Yeah, there's one resolution for the three change orders, and then the recommendation, it's really, it's just a council recommendation or authorization to reduce retainage to 1%. And I should just mention, again, the project is substantially complete, the amount of retainage that we'll still have on the project is over $33,000, so it's fairly significant. I mean, they have some warranty items, they have some minor items that we haven't paid in full yet, because what, perfect isn't completely established, so there really is no issue with reducing that. And I should mention that there was a new statute that passed in the future, this year, that as of August 1, projects bid after August 1, not this one, but any projects in the future, we would have to reduce the retainage without even bringing it to council, or a new statute.
Okay. I think we should do it in two motions, so I guess I'll make a motion to approve the additional change orders, three, four, and five.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, and the second motion is, has to do with reduction of retainage from 5% to 1%.
Second.
I got a motion by Ross Satter, second by Bruce Wolf. There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, close fast. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Item five, a little on.
Quick introduction, we have Mike Ingarde here tonight from True North, and Mike had been here, I forget how long ago now, with Russ Johnson from True North as well, to get our assessment review, and get to the point of actually getting the RFP in process to be issued and put out there, so, you know, a few months later, and I'm going to have Mike just run through everything, and certainly if you have questions from staff as we go through, or Mike, as we go through, feel free to ask those. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for your time this evening. It's called likings. So, it's our agenda real quick for this evening, and we wanted just to take a few minutes to do a high-level review of our assessment that we recorded on back in June, July, revisit that, and then we wanted to go through the overview of what our RFP process is, and what our selection criteria was in the RFP, and then to get to the proposals themselves, and then finish with our vendor recommendation. So our assessment process, we get all the way to the end of the... So it's a, it's a data-driven assessment, where it's not just a cookie cutter, it's not a one-size-fits-all, it's catered and customized to, to the city. We had, you know, top information collection, was, you know, that was onsite data collection, it was photos, pictures, it was collecting inventories, it was having discussions with key, key city members to find out what is state of technology today in the city, the data analysis, then we really going back to the office, and we're starting to crunch numbers, and we're starting to formulate what our, what our findings are, what our recommendations will be, compare those to the industry for manufacturer and vendor best practices, and then the analysis and comparison then lead to what our findings, what direction, what recommendations we, we are submitting to, to the city. And along with that are the budgetary costs and phasing, so we can realize, okay, how much is it going to be to remediate, and in what order should we do that, and then what the, what the next step should be, which, you know, taking that, that first phase and seeing what that, the first, the deployment of that first phase looks like. So this was also from the last presentation, it's really to reiterate that all those systems that are across the top there, be them collaboration, safety, you know, a bunch of different services that are now, you know, that previously had been analog, that are now on the network, that are not now IP-driven, and none of them will work unless their foundation underneath is, is solid, that wired and wireless network. Again, it doesn't depend on, or it doesn't matter about which device the end user or that IoT device, that smart city device is connecting, whether it's wired or wireless, it needs to be rock solid, otherwise the rest of those on top do not function. So we also stressed the, as part of our recommendations, is moving more of those on-prem services to the cloud. You know, today, the city has, like, like everybody does, has, you know, Word and Excel and PowerPoint and Outlook, and by moving to Office 365 model, there are many more applications that are, that are at the city's disposal, and also are accessible everywhere, and rather than having to, you know, forced to be at the office, or forced to remotely securely connect to network, this way there, you're always on, you're always connected, sometimes people don't want to be always connected, but leave that to policy, but at least this way you've got the tools to stay, to stay connected. So the Gardner Magic Quadrant is a, an organization, it's a tool that we, that we cite often. Gardner is a multi-billion dollar consulting firm for technology and other things, but we cite them for all the different systems that we assess, whether it's wireless, or phone systems, or software, and really want to focus on that top right quadrant, the leaders' quadrant. Those are the ones that have tested best, those manufacturers are tested best for that particular, for that particular system, and those are the ones that we really want to target, those are the best bang for the buck. So for our, for our, for our RFP, we'll go through what our process was. So in the RFP, these are the 10 systems that we, that we set out to pursue to gain proposals, to obtain proposals for. We've got the land switching on the top left, you know, those are the components that we're plugging all of our cables into, we've got perimeter firewalls, wireless access points, structured cabling and telecom spaces, a unified server for all the applications to reside on, new staff devices and setup of those devices, migrating the, the user data from their on-prem to now into the cloud, the long-term tech support of managed services, and then informal training on how to use those, those cloud, cloud-based applications. So for our RFP process, we'll start at the top there in the right, we start off with a set of specifications, general things like, you know, insurance form, background checks, those, those sorts of just general contractor requirements that we set out, technical, like, how many ports do we need, how many devices do we need, how fast does the equipment need to run, that sort of thing. And then the contractor specifications, like, okay, this has to be programmed in a certain way, you have to take your trash out when you're done with the project, that, that sort of thing. And then we move into, from, once we have those specifications, then we move down to the solicitation phase, publication. So that might be in the form of posting the, the RFP to the organization's website, sending out emails to our network of vendors and manufacturers, to the reputable ones, to let them know that, hey, this is out there and is available for proposals. And then once it's out there, then we, we'll take, we'll field questions, we'll receive those questions, and then per a schedule, we'll then release an addenda that addresses each one of those questions. Then we'll move into the evaluation phase, once the due date has come, and we'll look at things like pricing, qualifications of the, of the contractor, and then of course we will check the references. And then at the end, it takes the form of a recommendation report, summarizing all the scoring from the selection criteria, and issuing that to our, into our client. So for the city's RFP, these are the key dates that we, that we had established and publicized in the RFP. So we first released the RFP not too terribly long after our, our meeting here, so in mid-August, and then a week later, we had a pre-proposal comments call, and we fielded questions there. A week later, there was an onsite walkthrough at each of the sites here in the city to collect more questions, to allow proposers to get a firsthand look at the different, the spaces, the building material, you know, just kind of get that firsthand look about what they were, what they were getting themselves into. Last day of questions was just after Labor Day, and our first addendum was, was issued then later that week. We had an original due date for responses in mid-September, but we did field a few other cabling-related questions after that, and then revised our responses for, for mid-October. So our evaluation criteria, this is the breakdown of the different criteria, different categories we had, and their, their point values, price, that's obvious, ability to execute and perform, so included in that was, what experience have they had with municipalities? Under technology, that was how well did their products propose, fit our RFP specifications? Were they in that Gardner Magic Quadrant, that sort of thing? Under support, that was really tied to what their ability is for long-term support in the managed services realm. Understanding of requirements was, was their scope of work, was it complete, was it thorough, as well as their bill of materials, was it understandable, was it clear? And then value add were, references is self-explanatory, and then value add was, what additional features or services would you offer the city at no cost? So for our review of the different proposals, we fielded five different proposals, so we, the top three there, CIT, Pantheon, and CTS, all proposed for all 10 of the systems that we were pursuing. Corporate Technologies only proposed for the managed services portion, and Allstate only proposed for the cabling portion. High-level view of the manufacturers, the different, kind of, I guess, really a two-word summary of what their proposal was for each of our 10, for our 10 criteria, or categories, that is. So you can see that Allstate, they're on the far left, they, you know, they only did cabling, Corporate Technologies, they're in the middle, only did managed services, and the other three, you know, did all the other systems. So for our points total, you know, pooling all of those, all of the criteria together, this is a summary of what the, of the scoring played out. You can see there's a level for the council. You're going to shoot your book there right now. Page 11.
Yep.
And so we're moving now to vendor recommendation, so you can see that Computer Technology Solutions scored the highest under the pricing, that's an average of all 10 systems, individual pricing, scoring. And if anybody has any questions on how we got any of those points, we can, we can get back to that. So here's the, the advantages of sticking with a, with a single vendor. I will say that we did leave it open for, it didn't have to be a single vendor, but after seeing the different categories, the different pricing, it makes sense for the city to go with a single vendor for the, the advantages that we see there. So there's a cost savings, both short-term and long-term, it will make for a smoother implementation by having a single team do all of the elements, rather than one company starting and stopping, and having to kind of fill in the gaps, or pick up where they left off. It will ensure a higher quality finished product, because CTS is going to have to support that long-term, after, long-term, and it's in their best interest to, to finish with a, a good product at the end of the implementation. And it will lead to a one-stop shop, a single throat to choke, in case something happens, you only have one number to call, rather than this finger-pointing and starting. And CTS did include in their, in their proposal that if their managed services is selected, that there'd be additional reductions or eliminations of costs on some of those 10, some of those 10 items. Some of the other services that CTS, and by the way, CTS is out of Mankato. CTS does offer cybersecurity services, physical security such as cameras and doors, business telephone services, cloud services, and, and cabling. So some of the references we did obtain from CTS, these three that we show up here are all from city government, so this is from Newall, St. Peter, and from Adelia. And so each one of them had really good things to say about CTS, and we were, we wanted to make sure that this organization that we were going with, new city governments, and they, they understood how, how they work, how to support them best, and so we got some really good feedback from, from all three of those. So back during our assessment, we had, you know, the budgetary pricing is there on the left of what we estimated the cost of remediation for the different systems would be, and on the right is the, is what CTS, what their total proposal is, including some of those price reductions, and so you can see that we're, we're under budget there. So one of the things for your consideration for this evening is us moving into the contract administration phase, at the project end of a phase, where we actually deploy these systems, and you'll see this looks a very similar sort of flow chart down here, but our, our staff... our step, our first step in contract administration would be, or in the project setup, is to do the technical design discussions. So we would now go back with, with CTS if you approve, and we would start to, start talking about deep-level technical implementation details, IP addresses, logging credentials, those sorts of things, for them then to create a, an implementation document that they would use and we would use to validate what they're doing. Their submittals, so that would be their, their drawings, their diagrams, you know, their, their plan for the implementation for us to review from the start, and then, or the contract to actually be signed, once we have decided on all of the model numbers and all of the quantities and, and the order that we're going to install them in. And then we do a deployment, where we would make sure that they are staying within compliance of our RFP specifications. We would do inspections during the, during the project to make sure that nothing was getting off track, that they were installing things properly as they were going. And then we would address any change orders that were coming up. And then for the closeout section, we would do a final inspection, a final walkthrough for all the systems there, to make sure that those are installed and programmed according to specification. We'd also do those payment applications, and then we'd ask those, the closeout documents, and make sure that those are complete and accurate, again, according to what we had set up in the RFP. The last section there, excuse me, is the commissioning stage, where we, to our north, would, would validate all of the configurations and programming to make sure that they have put all the devices on all the maps, that they have named everything consistently, that everything is, is clean and complete, so that there isn't any ambiguity about how this is configured, that there's consistency. And then the accountability for the contractor, if we're doing that commissioning and we're noticing that things are inconsistent, or there's something that's not done, it holds that contractor accountable for, to complete that, to complete that task. And on the left is just some sample tasks. It, it partially mirrors what's on the right, with some sample tasks about what, what that would involve. So in summary, just wanted to go back to the budget versus proposed. We're on, you know, almost $63,000 under, under budget from what we did in the assessment. And then contingency was mentioned earlier. We also wanted to at least make provisions for contingency. We may need none of it. We may need some, if, you know, some, a few extra cables need to be ordered, or some other due ads need to be procured, that were unforeseen, you know, that, that sort of thing. So that's what a 10% contingency looks like, which is appropriate for a project of this, of this size. So our next steps for tonight is where, for your consideration, is consensus on vendor recommendation, and to approve our contract administration proposal, which we've given Mr. Andich. And then this month would, would be the final technical design with the, with CTS, and get that contract negotiated and signed, and then we would move into implementation in 2020. I think we had estimated during the assessment that the project would probably take around six months to do, but we would, of course, solidify that during, during the discussions with, with CTS. What questions do you have?
Yeah.
I think I understand the grids and point, point system. How much less expensive was the Pantheon in overprice versus the one in direct?
Um. I don't remember. I'm not sure. It wasn't, it wasn't a whole lot, but also in what you're looking at there, this does not include CTS's discounts off of their, the setup and their firewall. So that, that's not included. This is really just for apples and apples to apples, let me see if I can find it.
I'm sure it was the discount for including all the services.
The, so the, the firewall went from, I think, about $12,000 to zero. They would incorporate that into their managed services, as opposed to the city who's purchasing it outright. It would be incorporated into the managed services. That would just be a, a monthly, it's kind of like a lease. It would be kind of like the city releasing it. And then the staff setup, or the staff device setup was reduced by $6,000 from 14 to 8,000. And then the migration from, of the Office 365 migration worked, I think went from maybe 14,000 to zero also. Let me see if I can find it here.
14,000 to 8,000, and the device setup was 23,000 to zero.
23 to zero, thanks. Yeah, so the, in the summary, it's on page eight. So Pantheon was, was 395, 395,000, and CTS was 405, or almost 406,000. So a difference of $11,000 that.
Before the discounts.
Before the discounts, right.
CIT doesn't apply.
That's right.
That should apply.
Right, so CIT, there was some, in, in compliance, if that's a word, that they didn't, they didn't follow when it came to cabling. When we had to do, we had issued a cabling pricing spreadsheet that was really just asking for, for unit pricing, and they elected to not submit that. They just stuck with their original proposal, and so we were unable to kind of do apples to apples there on that, you know, that particular line item.
Is there desktops that we need to state or request?
That's right. There was, there were, you know, in our, in our RFP, we requested that laptops and rugged ones, laptops be, be proposed, and instead they had, had elected to propose desktops. They felt that that was more appropriate for the city, and that's not the direction that we've all discussed and agreed upon is, is for the city. So there were, that was another element that was, was not in compliance to our RFP. And then there was a third, there was a third element. It was a network, the network switches, the network devices were also not according to the RFP specification.
What did we have in the budget for managed services? Seeing the quote is 7,000 per month. What we're seeing in there, what, what we've got in the general fund is about 50,000, 400, and capital outlay of 77,500. And as I look at this tonight, assuming you're willing to move in this direction, what we'll do is we'll put together with what Mike is recommending tonight, and what we should have for your benefit is to see what we've got with the general fund and the other enterprise funds and that, so you can see what we've got budgeted that can address what the proposed costs are as he's recommending. But in the general fund, we've got about 50,000 plus capital outlay of about 77,500. So we've got more between our managed services and the capital outlay than we were expecting as our proportionate share of those costs. But I would need to bring in the utility enterprise fund cost for electric water, wastewater, to be able to give you that total picture now that he's got this narrowed down to this level, to kind of show you what the whole budgetary impact is from all funds, to be able to take care of the whole entire technology picture.
So are you saying that there should be some reduction of?
No, that when you, when we take a look at what's there, is that we have, looking at a five-year lease purchase financing in the capital equipment, as you take a look at dividing, if I can give my mouse back here, going to page 12, is that kind of where you're at, Bruce? As you take a look at it, that the managed services total loss is about 93.6 on an annualized basis.
Yeah, and so that's significantly higher than what we were assuming.
No, that what I've got, the only, what I've got in the general fund is 50,400 in just the general fund, and then we've got to add in the other ones. But on the capital outlay, if you take a look at that on the right page, we're dividing that out over five years. That's about at 83, and in the general fund, we're on at 77,500. So we need to, between the managed services and the capital outlay, we have sufficient dollars to cover the annualized cost, both within the general fund. I need to add in the enterprise funds to kind of show you that whole aggregate picture relative to what you're seeing for costs here.
And I, I'm sure it's in here, I just can't recall. Managed services is a, is a fighter contract or?
Well, they, a managed service, it's not specified in here, but they, they do have, it is a month-to-month, but they have like a minimum contract, so you can do one year, three years, five. It's rare to see five years, but one, 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 two, and three years are typical for managed services.
Yeah. Well, it just seems, I've been away from this for a little bit, so it just seemed like a big number, $90,000. But, but what I understood you to say, Mike, is that general fund is 50, but when you take in utilities and other ones, you're probably up to, their budget being 50,000.
By rebalance, what I've got in the general fund is that I may have a little bit more on the capital side relative to managed services, so I'm going to have to combine that. It's all within the technology budget, but I probably should show you for what you're looking at, what's in the general fund and what's in other utility funds, so you can see how we'd be addressing the numbers that you're seeing here tonight. And just, I mean, can kind of recall, we don't have a managed firewall of any sort.
We have a firewall right now, and we have kind of a month-to-month-as-needed review of that with CIT, one of the companies that we're not recommending to move forward with. And I don't, I'm sure it was, if it was you, Mike, that had mentioned, you know, we're, or maybe it was CTS when we had been on a call with them. We're getting kind of borderline of being the size of a city where you have a staff person, and this helps us not have to have a staff person, too, is something to keep in mind. You know, like St. Peter and Newall, they're bigger than us, but they each got two full-time IT staff people. So, you know, we've probably been a bit lacking in this area for a number of years. I think we're just finally catching up with where we should be with this.
So this would be maintaining the firewall and making sure all the updates are processed at a timely basis?
That's right. And another advantage to that is that in two years or three years when that particular hardware becomes obsolete, they come in and they change it out at no cost to you, and it continues to remain the same with the cost. And they're the ones who are installing the new one and making sure that it's, it's up to date.
So are there things that are not, I mean, that we're not needing, that we should be aware of? Like, you have the subscriptions to office, but is there a number that we're playing with?
For monthly cost?
For office subscriptions, yeah, I think you have it a whole per person.
Yes, sir. It's $35 per person, per user.
And do we estimate what that is?
We have estimated through that with our number of machines that we have.
Every machine would have that?
I think it's 2,700.
Basically, yeah. Every machine that has a need for any office, you know, email, Word, all that, they'll have that monthly fee on there. And we have actually anticipated that in all of our budget numbers. Like Mike said, we seem to bring that to you with the contract and show you how that breaks out per fund. It's within what we've budgeted.
Who exactly is going to get the laptops across the city? I mean, every employee?
We plan that for every employee. Now, I know we still have discussion internally if we, if we really need to do that. The cost isn't, you know, that significant between the desktop or laptop. So I think that's one of the things we can talk about in this final discussion here with, with CTS. There might just be some that we know will never need to move. But kind of the idea behind having one device was that we don't have multiple devices we have to support. You just have one device, and if it breaks, they know that it's the same model regardless of who they're going to, to work on. And that, that helps for the managed services dollar to be lower.
So this number 42 is not correct, or actually 48 if you have the six rugged ones. I'm assuming that would be like the building inspectors that take them out on site and?
That, that's basically every user, other than the golf course, because they had new computers. That's the 42 devices. So it's basically every employee that we have.
So why would a street guy need to have a?
And they don't have each individual. They have, what we would call it, a shared portal.
Yeah, right now they have a shared desktop at the Public Works Garage that all the employees besides supervisor or manager use for getting locates, looking up parts, things like that. That would probably stay the same way unless it's decided, which it really doesn't make any difference to the employee or to staff. If it's a laptop or a desktop, it's still going to sit in one spot and do its job in the office.
Yeah. Well, one of the nice things, though, about laptops is portability. I mean, if you go to a meeting, if you need to be looking up, you know, desktop's a pretty heavy thing to love around. So really, the cost difference between a desktop and a laptop isn't all that great.
Yeah, it's negligible these days, which is why we suggest just going to that. And eliminate duplications. Some of us, like myself, have a laptop and a desktop. I won't need to have a laptop and a desktop. I'm not the only one. I know Bruce and Glenn, for example, as well. There's more examples of that.
Well, I'm just, my question is, and I don't, I understand, is that we got a number that you guys use for budgets. Now, when we fine-tune this, are there going to be savings in the general fund or in some of these other enterprise funds? Or, you know, would that just be, you know, savings that will be, you know what I'm saying? Or I'm not making, you know, because we're saying, once you kind of sit down with CTS, you're going to kind of go over the harder numbers. Is it 20,000? Well, you know, that's a half a percent, you know, if it's in general, you know what I'm saying?
Well, when we did what, when we did do the budget, we used CIT numbers, because that's all we had at the time. And then when we had preliminary from CTS, we compared the two, and I think CTS was about $1,300 less, wasn't it?
Yeah, over the.
So it's going to be pretty close.
Over the five years, we're talking.
Right, over the five years.
So compared to what we had budgeted, yes.
And then, you know, we also did it for the five years, where, you know, now you've alluded that a lot of them are maybe three, maybe you could push four years. So that'll make a little bit of difference there as well. So I think we're going to be close, very close.
One thing I had was 63,000 under budget. Whatever a vendor says, I don't wait for the attitude to drop.
That was just an estimate, Rick. That was just an estimate, you know, based on their assessment as we went through initially and.
Right, it's not a quote. It's really just a ballpark estimations for the sake of budgeting.
So it could be greater or less.
It, it could have been. In this case, it wasn't. In this case, it's lower.
Okay. Moving to a cloud base, so do we have a certain amount of free space, and then what's the, is the cost for the additional space figured in here?
Well, it's, it's a terabyte per user, and it's going to take an awful lot for you to fill up all of that. It's, I mean.
Listen, I don't even know that we're using a terabyte overall.
Yeah, maybe a little bit.
On the server?
Right, right.
And we're talking over, you know, 50-plus users, so.
So are we just talking DAB and not applications, so that the cloud level?
Just, that's right.
So all the applications will reside on our servers here?
Right, right.
Okay. And that, well, I noticed St. Peter, someone asked for work space, and so they ran out. I don't know what they started with. I don't know what, you know?
I don't know what they have. They obviously have a server that they're running applications off of, and I don't know if they were, you know, just trying to keep it at a manageable amount of storage. I don't, I couldn't speak to that.
So are you saying that the, let's say, Microsoft Office is running, is installed on a server, and then the laptops access it, or is it actually installed on the laptop?
Actually installed on the laptop.
Okay, all right.
And then you're native stored.
Yeah, okay. That makes more sense, because otherwise.
Right. Now, there might, I mean, there might be some, I mean, technically, you could.
Oh, sorry.
Technically speaking, you could have an application, like you described, installed on a server that people get to, but that's not.
It's not ideal, no.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Why would we have all those applications on all of those computers? Why would we have all those applications on all of those computers?
You mean like the Word and Outlook and, and those?
Or other applications, why wouldn't we just have it on the server?
Well.
Update every one of those laptops, then?
Right, well, they, they'll all update, I mean, they'll all update automatically anyway, so that, and that is also configurable, so you could say, I only want them to update at six PM on Monday, or, or, or whatever.
You have to have it turned on.
You do?
Yeah, that's, that's my history, is that they don't, they don't have it automatically because we need cooperators.
They need to be, sure, they need to be, right, they need to be on, if they are left on, you know, that, that's something that also that CTS would, would manage when that would be pushed out, they would know, okay, which device hasn't had an update, it looks like it's been off for the last few weeks and it missed it, we need to, at least, at the very least, pick up the phone and call this user and say, can we work out a time to, your machine would be updated.
Well, don't they usually have a, a window that pops up?
They do.
Yeah, and usually send an email, an alert, and there's lots of.
Right, right, but even if you had it on the server, you'd still have to buy seats for each one anyways, really, you're not saving any money.
Well, what he's describing, in my experience, is, is a lot more work, I mean, it is more work, just because you do have to have things turned on, and you have to, and Joe's on vacation for two weeks, so his laptop's in his kitchen somewhere.
Right.
So things don't happen, they don't get updated, and that's one of the major risk assessment things.
That's true.
Is, when you look at your risk profile for technology, that's one of them.
That's right, that's right, and I mean, that's what, you know, managed services kind of live for, is to make sure that you are not letting things go ignored, and if they are going too long, we need to do something about it, that's their job, is to make sure that, you know, those holes, those risks are minimized.
Bruce, if it gives you any comfort, my company of over three hundred thousand employees does exactly what is being proposed, yeah.
A lot of people doing that work. And then I was just wondering to understand, all the sites, do we have like the firewall in there, is there any sites not included in this?
Uh, golf course is not getting new, um, desktop, because we just bought those back what in March or April.
And cable and needs or anything will be addressed?
Uh, so a lot of sites have cable that will not be being updated, uh, fire station, uh, power plant, uh, to name a couple, for example, so, yeah, we're not redoing things that are, you know, in very good shape, uh, or, you know, close to being.
Just to be clear, Bruce, it does not also include our SCADA control systems, Vlad and I run for utility side of things, both wastewater and water and electric, um, those, those systems are independent of this scope of work for the most part, so, um, they operate independent of this system.
Correct.
So, that is not included in this.
So I'm, I'm a little ignorant to how this all works, but is that fiber going down to like your, you know, HR head buildings down there?
So, so that, that part of it is, it is, yes, but like, the, um, the operating systems that we have in the power plant and at the waste treatment plant, they operate independent of, of this, this network, so, um, we're gonna have the capability to interconnect those so that staff can remote in and that type of thing, but, um, as far as the hardware swap out and that, that is totally separate, and use different operating systems to, to function, so.
Majority of the companies that take care of a computer system or an IT system in a city hall or, uh, other, uh, buildings know nothing about the operating system of a SCADA system, uh, that's really kind of, there's just a select few companies that do that.
And you, did you guys just update the SCADA system?
Not yet, we're waiting for all this to be done so we get the same equipment at least, um, hopefully a better deal on the equipment also.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion to approve recommendations of these staff.
Good, I will second that, so I guess we have a motion for the vendor recommendation with CTS, there's no other comments? Answer questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, that's just by zero, next we need to propose a consulting agreement, now, Mike, how do we have that, is that part of, uh, in the budget process, on that?
I think we've got enough in, uh, this year's budget, uh, in the general fund and the technology budget, that, uh, we can kind of prepay that fee and have that take care of, uh.
What do you mean, in two thousand nineteen?
Two thousand nineteen, yeah.
So the, um, proposal for the consulting services, just to point out, includes the commissioning as an optional, uh, for six thousand dollars, and that's the piece that you are talking about, of, um, where you oversee the measure to ensure that everything that was to be done is, is done, and everything is working properly and.
Right, after the project's finished is to validate and make, uh, all the configuration and all the cable termination, um, that everything was installed at, at the end, as it was intended, and to do that deep-level programming audit really is what it is, to make sure that, after we've taken all this effort, that we cross the finish line and get that last piece to ensure that we accomplished what we set out to do.
Any other questions, Dallas?
Just to verify, if cloud-based and all this VPN's gonna be in place, so we can get to the bottom of where we're at?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, include city council members?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, with your, with your laptop and those, those applications installed in there, you'll be able to use, you know, your laptop, you'll be able to use a tablet, a smartphone to pull that stuff up at a moment's notice if you need it, or you don't have to if you don't want to.
Should we have VPN licensing for our computers?
Um, there might be some specific scenarios where you even need to do that, but I would hazard a guess that most people won't need to, um, unless there is a specific application that resides on the server and not at the cloud that they need to get to, that'd be the only reason I can think of that somebody would need to VPN it, but to answer your question directly, the VPN licenses are a part of the firewalls proposed.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the future, some council members may like to have access to certain data or policies or information, or, I think you might just go this way, but maybe can, can appreciate being able to get agendas and things on the cloud.
Short answer, yes, you'd be able to get those things.
But that is not included in this, there wasn't any laptops for any of the council?
Oh, no, not, not the actual devices.
Right, okay, okay.
But just to be clear, we give our personal computers, if we have the security access to get a data on the cloud?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I look for a motion to approve the consulting services proposal?
So, move.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean Ryan, seconded by Rick Styler.
Do you want to include the commissioning?
I don't.
Are you against it?
No, not at all, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, no, I thought the answer to the question was concerned that.
Okay, that includes the commissioning tool six thousand, so they would make sure everything is as should be towards the.
Is that staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, so I got a motion, which includes a commissioning, um, by Sean, seconded by Rick Styler, there's no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, I'm excited to get started.
I'm sure staff is too. Now, on January fifteenth, it's not gonna all shut down, is it?
No, actually, that's a good question, we didn't talk about that, it's not like a hard, the world's gonna blow up kind of a thing, no.
It's not like, it's not like worth two thousand?
Why two K?
Yeah, that's right. Okay, next, Jim. And I see you brought your trusty side here.
Yeah, and I just want to thank Mike for taking us past kickoff time, so now I will be planning for heat.
Attorney General and Mayor, we are here, uh, to review our policy once again, before we get into the policy and take some public input, if there's any public input, I was gonna have our Sergeant Athlin kind of just do a demo about the camera, the system, how it interacts with our phone, uh, to work through that, which may make just reviewing the product, the policy a little easier, uh, and, I have no intent of going word for word through all pages of policy, everybody had the policy, I've made a few changes to it so far, um, to date, public input has been very minimal, I have a couple emails that I can share with you, um, but, uh, I'd like to start off with Sergeant Athlin just talking about our cameras, what we have, what's available to us, how it is used.
And Jim, just before you start, city attorney has reviewed this, or not?
Yes, city attorney has reviewed, um, the initial one that you got last meeting, and then this meeting, and I just made a couple changes just to clarify about when it is to be used, and part of the discretionary of the officers, when they can choose not to use it, and I'll review those.
Okay, thank you.
Can you pull up this?
I'm gonna have you a couple of these. And this is just the camera itself, so I'll let you guys pass that around, um, and just take a look at it, and then I'll just, um, some hands-on stuff later, and you guys can take a look, um, as Jim had previously discussed with you already, um, we're going to the, this is a demonstration on the Axon, the body-worn cameras, um, I have kind of an introduction video here that we kind of explains what Axon is and what they're doing right now, um, a lot of technology involved in this.
Go ahead, I'm gonna have to turn the volume a bit.
We have more in common than we tend to think, no matter who we are, where we're from, we all want the same thing, to come back home, safe, and that's our mission, we are reinventing modern policing, we are Axon, we've designed training, software, and less lethal weaponry to protect life, software that reduces paperwork so officers can prioritize what really matters to their community, like helping others in their greatest time of need. We've designed body cameras that capture truth to provide transparency and accountability for all, and empathy training that helps de-escalate incidents safely. All these tools come together to give officers a chance to protect life without taking life, so that we can all come back home, safe.
Okay, so like I passed around, that is the Axon Body Tube, um, HD video, advanced audio, that's the last our entire shift, battery'll last, um, it's actually, it looks like, uh, something from a Star Wars movie, but it's actually really easy to use, very user-friendly, um, it goes in there, so right now, it is in buffering mode, okay, so it's on. Thanks, uh, buffering mode, so I just turned this on, you'll see the green light is flashing there, it's ready to go, okay, it's a matter of, of, and we're going right now, so now we're in buffering mode, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put this on, I'm gonna give you my cellphone and show you what I'm seeing as I walk around the room, um. So this is one feature that's called the Axon, Axon View, so I, I put it on to live, it'll pop up there in just one second. Connected, okay? No, you see what I see, so as I walk around the room here, that's what you're gonna see.
Is it still buffering then?
Yeah, buffering mode, yep, so, and we'll, we'll get into that here in a little bit, but this is essentially what, what, what you're seeing, so as I walk around the room here, you see what I see, so my hand goes in front like this, now I'm on here, so you can see what I see, it's not recording right now, it's just buffering, that's just showing a live view of what I'm seeing.
Tim, is that where they're gonna be required to wear it, is on their chest, because I noticed in that video, one of the gals had it down low on her hip, but.
Yes, we have, um, in, in our policy, um, we have it specified where we should wear, so, chest, pocket, it's not gonna be on the belt, in a, on a pocket down here, um, up on top, chest or a pocket, so on, when a jacket, that's what we have the outer, those other carriers, so, in a jacket, it can go on the outside of a jacket and still attach and hold on to your jacket as well, so.
Do you have their officers or the chiefs see on their phones your?
Were you doing it on your phone?
No, no, so my device is paired with that phone, um, so I cannot, I cannot log into someone else's phone and essentially, you know, have a, a live PD TV show in my living room, no, I couldn't, I couldn't do that, so.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
Because that would be convenient, if the dispatch could activate it, it's yourself and tell them what the situation, you know what I mean?
The dispatcher?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and until we get there, we don't always know what's there either, right?
Yeah.
So, that's for us to relate to them when we get there and we go from there, but I'm gonna have, um, Ken, just take a short picture, video, or whatever you want of me, and we'll get to that at the end.
Just on my.
Whatever you wanna do, yep, just take a picture of me, or a video, or whatever you want, so, video resolution, ten eighty, last our whole shift, as we know in Minnesota, we, uh, contend with warm, cold, these will function in the cold and the warm, um, they're made, they're made to do that rugged ice, and as you felt, it's pretty, pretty solid, they show all kinds of tests with rain and snow and mud, and they throw them on the ground, and they're, they're very ruggedized. So the Axon dock security, so you can see that, kind of that docking station there, what that is, is that's where all the evidence goes when we plug it in at the end of our shift, okay, so, in our policy, it says we put it in there at the end of our shift every night, so everything gets uploaded to evidence.com, which is where all this is stored. And going back to our cloud security we were just talking about, same concept. It's all stored by Axon, none of it is here maintained by us. This is through evidence.com.
Do you have access to that though? Like in the morning, can you and the chief check out the incident that happened right?
Yes. Yep. We can access that through evidence.com. So it's very, very secure. It requires an outgoing secure network. Through secure, the HTTPS originating from our private agency network. So again, going back to the previous presentation here, that security issue, right? Nobody can access our evidence. We can access our evidence. There's a select group of people at Axon. I think there are four people there that have an advanced security clearance in the event of an emergency. They contact us and we give them permission then to do that, but nobody else has access to our evidence in that, in evidence.com. So again, outbound internet connection, talks with evidence.com. There's a photo. After this thing is paired and set up and everything is how it needs to be for our connection, the officers don't have to do anything more with it. That picture that showed the docking station, all they do is go in there at the end of their shift, they plug it in and they're done. It goes, it changes color, changes to a red. If there's a problem with it, it gives you a code and the officers know that. So if they see that if it doesn't go to the red, then it's not working. And we can fix that. That's just a call to Axon and there's a connection error, if there's something going on there. We haven't had one happen yet. It's been, it's been seamless. So through that dock, it gets all the updates. So the officers don't have to log in, you know, worry about it being on to get an update. Like when you're concerned with the computer system and say, does this need to be on? Am I gonna get an update at six o'clock on Tuesday? They plug it in, updates are pushed, it's an everyday thing.
Tim, do each officer have their own individual camera? They don't share them, do they?
Correct, yep, everyone's issued their own.
They're just coming to grab one as well.
Right. So if you notice on the back of, this one I have a number two on the back of mine. So everyone, each one of these has their individual serial number and they've been assigned to the officer. That's how I paired my device with my phone, so. And they all have their own ID. So that's how they're differentiated when we go onto evidence.com. That device is assigned to that officer.
Would you have extra ones?
We do.
If some, okay, so if one wasn't working?
Yep. And that's, that's part of the policy is if you notice an error with yours or have an issue with it, you bring it in, you notify your immediate supervisor, you grab one that is working and we know that that's a spare, so. So evidence.com, this is kind of the nuts and bolts of this whole system. This is where it all starts. This is where all the evidence is stored. Again, it's a color based, it continues to just keep up with the times essentially is what it is. This is a very large company and they're, it stores videos, pictures, our evidence, our citizen, our citizen evidence, which I'll show you moving forward here that we'll have Ken help us with here in a few minutes, but. Again, we're not, we're not using our stuff, our servers. This is a lot of data. Data costs a lot of money to store, to maintain, to have people to manage that data is, you know, it gets to the point of it's almost unmanageable at times. So it's all managed here through evidence.com. So that's what our home screen would look like. The officer would log in here with their email and their password. So each officer has their own login information. We have the ability to redact these videos. As you can see in this, in this photo, their faces are blurred out.
In case of HIPAA or such?
What's that?
Is there a case of HIPAA or something like that?
Whatever you need to do. So if we were in this room and there was a protection or a juvenile, okay, we wanna blur it out that face, okay? So we could do that. And we could only take one of these if we needed to or both. Or we could take out the house address, maybe the numbers on the house. We don't wanna see the numbers on the house depending upon what that situation is. We can, we can take this software and do whatever we need to do with that video.
And it's not you guys, it's actually the Exeometer?
We do it.
It is?
Yep. I'll show you one here that I did here.
But the original is stored elsewhere?
The original is always there. There's always a copy of the original and this would be a redacted version of that. So there's always, we can never delete that original video. It's there, but if we're gonna share this with somebody, we have to redact what needs to be redacted based upon the circumstances. So in their software, they have a smart tracker assisted redaction where I could put a blur like around circle, around the face, and it would follow that face around as the video moved up to 10 spots at a time. So I could pick up to 10. So a big, a big incident, if I need to block out 10, I could do that. Beyond 10, I'd have to do it manually. So I could do 10, if there's 12 people, I could do 10 and then I'd have to do the two manually. But 10, 10 would be a pretty blurry video. And then a manual. Like I said, if I wanted to just block out a house number or one face in there, I could do that as well. And then the skin layer, I have an example of that in here. It actually, the software reads the skin. So if we needed to block out tattoos on arms, it would grab arms, legs, face, whatever you needed to grab and it would block out all skin tones in that video.
When you say skin tone, does that mean also ethnicity?
No, I meant, just it grabs the skin, like skin.
So if this were a person of color, would that redaction also be the same?
Yes, yeah, yep. There's a security feature. We get a multi-application. So now I get an email to me. Hopefully. I'll get it here, one more time. So this is the Axon View that I was showing you earlier. The officers are able to pull this up on their phone. Okay, if they just recorded a video, they're able to go into their phone, find it and replay it. Maybe that's somebody that just came by and grabbed your wallet or your jacket as they were running by. They could come back and say, is this the person? You know, is this not the person? Helps us. It's quick, it's right there. We don't have to go back to the office, download the video, put it into the docking station, pull it up on evidence.com, it's right there. So that video will be there until we dock that camera back in the docking station, then it uploads. So it's not, we can't watch these for days on end and.
Right, so it's only before you put it in?
Correct, yep.
So if an officer wants, at the end of the day, review something, an incident that happens for when they're doing their paperwork, they can look that up and what was it put in the dock?
Exactly, but they can still access that through the evidence.com account, yep.
It's a lot easier though, I mean, if you were doing a report and you wanted 10?
Yep, especially with dictation, you know, an officer could be out in their car maintaining their visibility in the community, pull up that video, take a blur out of it, dictate their report and didn't have to come back to the office, so, very nice. So Axon Citizen, I have a video here that explains this very well. This helps us interact with the community by having a citizen share a video, a picture with us without us having to take their phone and bring it back and have it officially. If I, if you took a picture and I said, boy, I'd really like to have that as evidence, now I need your phone. Right? Not, yeah. You'd be surprised at how many people don't say that, you know? I mean, everything's on our phones, right? It's our life. People don't want, they don't wanna give you their phone to have, even if it's for a day, half a day, you know? They can send us this by email, text message. It's very, very convenient. Maybe you had a bad day.
Yeah.
So that could be something as simple as, you know, a... I think if it has, say there's a big incident downtown and I go to like those Inky Days or something in a car, you know, there's a big fight, a car plows down Main Street. What's everybody doing? Right, everybody's doing this. Okay, so if we go and find eight, 10 of those people, send them an invitation, they can all share that with us almost instantly.
And then you download it from your phone or when they, when, let's say I gotta send you the video. Does that go to your phone or does that go to your camera? So it's secured anyway?
Goes through the Axon, Axon or evidence.com. All through that secured. So if we send out a link, what that's gonna do is take it to a video portal where we're able to triage those videos. Okay, so somebody's not sending us something that completely unrelated. So we're able to go in there and see what they sent us. Yep, this one's gonna work, this one's gonna work, this one's not. They'll maintain in there, but we're only gonna use the ones that are gonna benefit us. Does that make sense? Okay. Okay, I'm hoping, I'm having a connectivity issue with my phone. So what I wanna do is get this Axon Citizen and show this to, show you how this works.
I guess for my sake, I pretty much have a good idea how it works, so.
Yeah, okay.
If you're having problems, we don't need to tell you.
No, I was just gonna show it takes, it's real quick. I was just gonna show you a Big Bang woman, but for time constraints too, I understand that. I would like to get back to that.
We're only halfway there, but we are halfway there. Is this one of the largest vendors for this service out there?
Axon is the largest vendor, is utilized by the most agencies in the United States. Hopefully we're back here. I'd like to show you one of our, our videos from, that we have. All right. So here's an actual new prey video and it's been redacted, so name, faces are gonna be blurred out and.
Hi, are you?
Charles.
How you doing? I'm here for Angela, she here. Okay, is there anything that you can help us with as far as where we can start looking for her so we don't have to keep coming here? Because just because this is. Because just because it's her address that she has listed here. Tammy, Kate, report. I'm Katie.
This is the skin blur, that's why it did this one, so it's picking up, that's why it's drawing on that other, that's why it's...
Me Victor?
Sure. You certainly don't need to watch the whole thing, but... That was the skin blur, is what that was, so that's the program picking up anything that it believes is human skin, even though it's not. Yep.
Now, to do that video, did she have to activate it?
Yeah. Yep, so the activation is, she pushes on the front here, and then it's, again, to shut it off.
And you can go back 10 seconds?
It's, it's available to go back, yes. We're able to, so it's always buffering.
How far is the policy here?
The policy is gonna be 30.
30 seconds right now.
30, 30 seconds right now, is what we have in there. So...
That's in the policy?
It's not actually in the policy, that is a procedure.
Procedure, yep.
I'd like to have a discussion on that.
I just wanna do one more, then we can be, I'll finish up here. Just wanna add a traffic stab. So this is, this is one where this individual will stop for not having their headlights on. Okay, so pay attention as, as the officer walks up here, you can actually see the lights come on. So if there's any question at a later date, the officer says, "You didn't have your headlights on." Driver says, "Yeah, I did." Here it is.
And you can also use your dash cam to back that up.
That's great, Tim, that you can catch that. I mean, obviously that helps your case too, but, you know, we hear a lot of reports that I've been pulled over because I didn't signal longer than we did before. It'd be nice if we go back to the full two minutes, whatever that is, that we could see him actually following this car.
Yeah, on a, on a body camera?
Yeah.
You're just gonna see the steering wheel.
Well, maybe, but it might be that they're sitting up higher too, that, that's why I inquired about where they're gonna wear them, are they gonna wear them on their shirt pocket? Because when I drive my car, you know, I don't, I don't know what your vehicle's, where they sit.
Yeah, and...
You might be able to pick up that, you know, their...
It's, it's possible, depending upon how, you know, how, how they're positioned in the car, or, normally they're not, but not to say that that's not, not completely possible. It is, so...
Tim, you're also gonna have issues, as the council member right is raising the question, is that it's gonna depend on whether somebody's wearing a summer uniform, or whether they're in winter, or they've got jackets on that, because there's not all that many places to connect to. Is there not a different...
With that, with those two mounts, we are able to put that on the outer, outer portion of our jacket. So this is that little thicker magnet that will go on an outer jacket, so... It can be, yes.
Do you guys wear tactical vests on the outside of your uniforms, or do you, it's all on the inside?
Some officers have external carriers.
Some do.
But the same with the, with the heavier magnet, the larger magnet, those are made to go through a thicker clothing assembly.
Just very much careful, or you could use a bullet.
Be nice. I'm happy to answer any, any questions, or anything else that I can address with you.
Citizens, you're ready?
Not ready, not ready yet.
Yeah, let's do, we can do that, citizens. Okay, you have it up? So I'm going to my citizen, all I'm gonna do is enter a, an ID and a category here, which would be like our ICR number, if I was investigating a theft. So I'm just gonna enter a, a number, and I'm just gonna use 190000... 19. I'm gonna do a training.
Redact that out.
That's what the mayor's called, swivel movie.
Mine's on the website.
I'm gonna make the motion to adjourn pretty soon.
Yeah, it's, I just sent an invitation to Ken, he should be getting it here shortly. He already got it, and all he has to do is do it on his end, share that video with me. I can't see it. Did it go? Any other questions? We have a wifi issue.
Ken? Well, I appreciate it, Tim.
But that was, he got it 10, 10 seconds after I sent it to you?
I sent it to him.
So it'll, it's instantaneous.
Yeah, it seems like it.
What, what do you have internet connection, works great?
Well, that IT connection.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, Tim, that was informative. I know at the last meeting, we asked Jim to actually see footage and things like that, because, you know, you don't know exactly how it looks like, but having actual, real live video of the difference, very good resolution there.
So when do you start the programs? I mean, you only have a few test ones, not right? Not every officer has them?
We, we do, we go back, you know, and I think, the last few months, we, we actually had our, I'm sorry, we've had our training in August, and then went on a, a process to evaluate and develop a system on what we're gonna do with them. Part of that culminated into developing this policy with that, based on how we were gonna categorize and what we were gonna do with our videos. So, actually, we may have, I think there's over a thousand videos right now that have been downloaded already, that we've used throughout the summer and the fall. So that is in place. So I think the idea is to develop, work through this policy process. Part of that process by statute is to take public input, and then based on the public input and any input from the council, we would go on to finalize that policy and then put it in place for the end of the year, or starting January 11th.
Jim, you mentioned that you had made a few changes to the policy that we had previously reviewed. Would that be in the general guidelines for reporting?
It was.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And just, take a look at the policy. Everybody had the opportunity to read through the policy. The primary purpose is to use these portable recording systems, known as body worn cameras, to capture evidence arising from police and citizen encounters. So this policy just helps to set forth those guidelines, how it's gonna follow, how it's gonna flow. And ultimately, the next title is the, the policy. It is the policy of the NuBray Police Department to authorize and require the use of agency issued portable recording systems as set forth below.
If, in the event that you make any additional changes to this version, can you do that in red line?
Yep.
That'd be great, so that way we can see actually what's changed.
Now, it starts off with the definitions. These definitions are, are placed here in the beginning of it, because throughout the policy, it refers to some of those definitions, and why video was required of certain interactions. One of the big ones there is evidentiary value. Information that may be useful as proof in a criminal prosecution, related civil or administrative proceeding, further investigation of an actual or suspected criminal act, or in consideration of an allegation against a law enforcement agency or officer. So those, again, those definitions just kinda set up what may be utilized throughout the policy then. Use and documentation, well, training, training is on page two also. Simply, like I said, we went through training in, in April with, with their body cams, to the degree that placement, testing them, going through that procedure, downloading, tagging files, and that process. At that time, we utilized our, our cell phones to be able to connect Bluetooth with the, each individual camera. Each officer had to pair that with their camera. And I know last time we talked, Bruce, at our last meeting, you were a little concerned about that app and, and it not being disclosed of how many times an officer might view it. Ultimately, that app only works when they're with their camera, and within, within a range of 30 or 40 feet to their camera, because it's a Bluetooth connection. Once they drop it into the docking station, and that starts to download, they will no longer be able to see that video on their phone. So it, it's really part of a pre-evidence type thing, that once it gets put into evidence in evidence.com, then it's controlled and monitored and audited on who sees it, when they view it, and then that becomes an audit list of, anybody can go to that, well, not anybody, administrators can go to that video and click the audit and see exactly who viewed it, what time they viewed it, and if there were any, any input as to why they needed to view it or not. But ultimately, with permissions with each and every user that's developed on our evidence.com for NuBray Police Department, they only have permission to their videos, ones that are, came from their camera itself. We do have the ability to, an officer could say, "Hey, I wanna share it within the department with Officer B, because they assisted me on this call, and they want to view that video, or they've requested to review that video." That could be done. But again, last time we talked about, generally, if there's no, out of the ordinary circumstance, you're gonna be writing your report about your video, they're gonna be writing their report about their video. So generally viewing your own should be enough in this place.
So, the ability to watch it at your kitchen table on your personal computer is still there?
Through evidence.com, they could do that, but once they're watching it in that manner, that's being documented and audited. An audit list is being created every time somebody views that video. So, to me, if that officer is not working, that may be a violation of the policy, and it would be dealt with that.
So do you have some kind of audit trail to show them that IP address, that's not the city that's done that?
Well, if they were viewing a video when they were not working, that would be enough for me.
But you, you have this, this company provide an audit?
Uh, they, yeah.
Or tell you, hey, today, this morning, this happened last night?
It would have the username, date, and time stamped on the audit list. I, they could probably dive deeper and tell me exactly what that IP address was that utilized and signed in. I would have to go deeper, I think, further, deeper with an investigation than just seeing it on the actual audit list.
Yeah, that'd be too bad. It'd be nice if you'd be able to have a red flag report that be, that just shows, this was unauthorized access. But so the only way that you can document whether you authorize it or not is your own personal.
Yeah.
I told Joe he could do it, but you don't know that Joe's doing it maybe Wednesday at home.
Well, again, they would only be looking at, they only have access to their videos.
No, I understand. What I'm just concerned about is that we had to start to do these things in public settings, or personal homes, or the coffee shop, or whatever.
And, and that's covered in the policy as an unauthorized use.
Right.
Which could result in some coaching, all the way up to firing or letting them go.
And then do, do we have the proper audit in place to be able to catch that? Would be our issue?
Yeah, I think, I think as we develop the policy, that's part of, of the process is reviewing videos and taking a look at that. We have administrative rights that we can pull out some of those audits and see some of those views and what's going on. By law, we're also required every two years to do an audit of our entire system, which is an external audit of somebody coming in, looking at various videos, taking a selection, making sure we're following our policy, making sure they're tagged the way they're supposed to be, and they're handled the way they're supposed to be, and that the retention periods are set up appropriately based on our policy, and that they're getting deleted when they're supposed to. So that, that's another part of the law that was put into place with body worn cameras, that a two-year audit is mandatory for every department that utilize. So, even if an internal audit may not, maybe we don't view enough videos or something, that would help to bring that to light also.
Whenever you think about that, I was thinking that you had to have like a VPN security to get internet computer to get access, but the way this demonstration looks like, as long as you have the security codes, you can go to any laptop anywhere, any public computer and look at it.
That's how it's developed, that as long as you have internet access, you can develop it, or you can get access to it.
Yeah. See, with my accident, they put, Shakke PD just put on a CD disc, so that the attorneys could look at it whenever, which it couldn't ever copy because it was encrypted. You know what I mean? Like I said, I'll bring it in.
You couldn't forward.
But that's all encrypted information, so you can never copy it again. Is this, is this information that we're discussing right now, is that under an encryption?
Is this, is this information that we're discussing right now, is that under an encryption security code? Once it's sent out, it's just sent out to that one computer and can never be copied again?
Uh, no, everything is maintained in the cloud. You're viewing it from the cloud through your connection. And, and that's what's being audited, that this user is viewing this.
Right, so they can't email that to?
Their own, no. Not without, not without being documented that it was downloaded, obviously. Yeah, that, that becomes part of that audit then also.
So I think maybe Bruce too, what you were alluding to is that we don't see anything here in the policy about doing periodic audits, other than the every two years auditing. So on a quarterly basis, perhaps at just random audit?
Well, it would happen more than quarterly.
Okay.
Than a supervisor either, myself.
It was just hypothetical, you know, as far as the frequency, but.
But no, we, we view videos probably weekly.
To audit, so that you ensure that they're not being accessed incorrectly.
That they're tagged appropriately, they're being downloaded in a timely fashion. The policy talks about you should be downloading at the end of your shift.
Right, but viewing, but viewing a video, so an officer, case in point, is at home.
But it isn't video that an officer will only view for law enforcement purposes only.
Right, it's in the policy, yes.
And if they, if they are on their personal time viewing something, then that would be inappropriate.
That would be a flag, absolutely. But how do you catch that?
Um, well, again, that's by, by looking at various videos and seeing what downloads and.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of, that's your audit.
That would be part of that audit, yeah.
Okay, okay.
As we just, on the bottom of page two is use and documentation, just talks about officers, police officers and patrol supervisors are required while on duty to wear agency issued body worn cameras. Administrative and investigative personnel are not required and may at their own discretion. I know our school resource officer had a question right away after he read through the policy and said, hey, do I have to wear one all the time? And I said, no, in my estimation, you're a part of investigative, you're on a special assignment in the school, you would not. And recently, he started wearing plain clothes. We had talked about that, that initially, the first few weeks, he was in uniform. Now he's in, in dress clothes. And I'm fine with him not having one. There are other rules that apply when he's at school also, when he would videotape something. But I just revealed with him that, hey, if you are in uniform, if you're taking calls or if you're making a simple traffic stop in a uniform, then the policy will apply because you are doing patrol work at that time.
Is that common? Is that issue where they don't have to wear the common in other forces, in the court building?
Yeah.
I think that would be very valuable.
It can be. You're also creating a lot of.
Distance.
Well, and, and the need for redaction on any.
Juvenile.
Yeah, they're all juveniles, so it would be very difficult to get permission from everybody to release that. You'd be pouring out everybody on it. And that's part of policies that, that kind of clarify, hey, in a school setting, you do not utilize this unless it becomes an adversarial or use of force issue where it's between you and that person and you videotape, then you deal with redacting later on. But if you are able to collect some evidentiary value evidence, then you would do that. On F on page three, I just want to talk about officers must document BWC use and non-use as follows. Whenever an officer makes a recording, the existence of the recording shall be properly categorized and labeled. The idea of that, again, when they download it, they're going to do that labeling or from their phones, like Tim was showing you live view. Part of that Exxon view is also, you could see a video on there, look at that one, see what it is, and then do your tagging right there on your smartphone. So that, that by Bluetooth connection sends that tag in those categories to your camera and when it downloads, they're already tagged and ready to go then. Then the officer doesn't have to go back into evidence.com and do that. He can do them or she'll log her out on their shift also. And then two is whenever an officer fails to record an activity, it is required that the recording, under this policy or captures only part of an activity, the officer must document the circumstances or reasons why they did not end their video. Tim and I also, it says supervisors shall read these reports and initiate any corrective action deemed necessary. We do review those reports already as part of our RMS system. They are approved by supervisors, so if we see a history of that or some issue with somebody, then we would address that immediately. General guidelines on the top of page four, these are, these get to the reason or the time when a video should be taken. A, the first sentence there just states, except as otherwise provided in this policy, officers shall activate their body worn cameras to record all contacts with citizens in the performance of official duties. The purpose of this policy and use of these cameras is to capture evidentiary value. That, that shows up that may, again, be criminal in nature, maybe, may help a civil investigation or if the officer gets a complaint or an allegation against them, we would want it on video of what took place in that incident. So it would either prove or disprove what is being alleged. So that is the, that's the basic statement of when they should be used. Any, any contact with citizen in the performance of official duties. If they're working on duty, that would be the generalized effect of that. And then B just talks about a Brady Giglio, that's a, that's an officer that might have a history where they have some concerns about them being truthful or honest because of other documentation that the department has on them. Some of those officers would be required to record all the time. And then C just talks about their, their ability to let a person know if they are being recorded, which you can be respectful to a person if they inquire, you can let them know, yeah, you're being recorded by this. And then officers shall not intentionally block the body worn cam's audio or visual recording function, functionality to defeat the purpose of this policy. So that would be the idea that nobody's going to be hanging a glove over their body worn camera or something. That is not, not, not possible by policy, so that would be a violation. On the special guidelines was the other place on A that I kind of switched things up a little bit. We talked about, about having discretion of when to use it and when not to use it. This is just the, the out, again, the purpose is to collect potential evidentiary value footage. So A just says that by exercising of sound discretion, they can not use their body worn cameras to record general citizen contact if there's a reason to believe the recording would not potentially yield evidentiary value. Those would be in situations of maybe that motor assist that somebody asks for directions, they walk up to them and ask them, or somebody that calls them or makes contact with them and wants to talk about crime in their neighborhood or something, that isn't necessarily an interaction that's going to result in any evidentiary need for that, so they could choose not to record that.
Is the rest of this then, just as we read it before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Unless, are you using this for any public comment today?
Um, no, yeah, it's been posted on our website, so I think everybody, everybody has seen the same. When I made those two additions, that was posted, reposted on the website as the current.
Jim, you don't need to go through this.
No.
We don't, we have to act on this yet tonight? Because I'd like to have more discussion on it, but.
The intent was to set up for discussion tonight, solicit any additional public input, gain counsel if necessary, and to continue the discussion at the next meeting with, as Jim described, the idea that we get this adopted at around the first of the year. So, no, it's not required that you finish up this tonight. The intent was, was to make it available for the solicitation of any public input so that we could incorporate, see what that was, and see whether we needed to make any changes there or not.
Okay, well, we had like four people already leave because it's, we've been here for three hours. So I don't know, maybe, Chantel, do you want to comment on the policy?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. So I'm just wondering if we could.
Yeah, we can kind of.
We're done. The only public comment, con, our public input I received were two emails. One just saying it's a great tool for the officers to have and that the New Brae Police Department is doing a great job in our community. And then the other one just talked about wishing that in some cases they could be made private. And ultimately by state statute, all of these are, all body cam videos are private with the exception of some that are made public by statute in chapter thirteen, which is use of force, a shooting, some of those items become public. A person can request, if they are a subject of the data that we hold, they can request to see that. So I may share a video with somebody, doesn't necessarily mean I have to release it to them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Where's the more gun?
There you go.
It worked really well, I just wanted to play.
You're a celebrity. Okay, next up the agenda is.
So if I can just clarify then, based on this, that the intent would be to bring it back for any final council discussion modification to the policy with the idea that at some point then, following that, if that was normal in nature to, to ultimately get this adopted so that we can put it in place.
Seems to me we're prepared to approve it next meeting.
I think so.
I would be, but it's getting late, I don't want to keep.
I just think we should also make sure it's blessed by the city attorney, that's the other thing.
It was, it was reviewed. Commentary was incorporated into the revisions that Jim made, and so that process has been completed.
Yeah, I think that's critical. Okay, I know at the last meeting we had an inquiry, we asked you to move on to consider changing the ordinance on Sunday liquor from ten o'clock to eight o'clock to follow state statute. And it was consensus of the council at that time to go ahead with that, and I assumed the changes were made to the existing ordinance, so would this be the first reading then, Mike?
It will be, but let me go through just a little bit if you, if you don't mind.
I'll see the changes, so we can just put it in that they can't serve after one o'clock.
Which was clarifying that if we had put language to follow state law.
Yep.
It could have extended that till two PM.
Right.
And I didn't.
Two AM.
Sorry, two AM. And I hadn't received that direction and it was a council's desire to do that, so under the assumption and the belief, we wanted to hold on to the one PM. We had to specifically address that issue in here because they could have gone to, holders of license, could have gone to the state to get the license to serve from one to two. And so all this does is close down that possibility, but does open it up at eight AM.
Thank you.
Okay, so your action tonight is to approve the introduction with the idea that the adoption would be at the sixteenth. We would be able to publish on December twenty-sixth. And the ordinance is effective upon publication, so it would be ready for, starting on Sunday the twenty-ninth of December.
Okay, I got a motion to put the first reading on the ordinance in play by Rick Soller, seconded by Sean Ryan. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, next we have board applicant, two board applicants for part board.
We've got two applicants, and so it's a matter of trying to set a date to potentially interview the candidates. And whether you want to do that between now and the end of the year, whether you want to wait till after the first year is your choice.
They wouldn't take their seat until June first anyway, so.
Well, these are vacancies.
Oh, the, oh, the, you are correct, that's right.
Immediately after they are approved.
Thank you.
So there are two vacancies?
Just one.
There's one vacancy with two applicants.
Well, we also have to get golf in here too.
So you want to combine that maybe and do it on the same night if possible, because we typically have set aside fifteen minutes for an interview.
Yeah.
So the two interviews, and we need to do the golf budget, so likely that means sometime next week, and maybe we could kill both of those birds at once.
Sure. I hope well.
Not figuratively.
I'm open all week next week, so it's no problem.
I'm gone on the thirteenth.
Well, that's Friday. Especially Friday the thirteenth.
Let's do it on the ninth.
The ninth, we want to start the interviews at five thirty.
Yes.
Do the interviews and then have the golf court thing at six on the ninth, is that where we first?
Yeah.
John? Quick, get into a Viking score.
Seventeen, ten at halftime, Vikings.
Oh, come on.
The ninth, yes, I will go there.
Okay, so we'll do five thirty interviews, six o'clock golf. And Barbie will just let us know if that works for the interview.
Yes, I will.
Next, consent agenda, anyone have any questions?
I did, but I'll do it there.
Okay, so if there's no comments or questions, Rick, looks like you made an official consent agenda. And I will second that. So if there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, miscellaneous, anyone have anything out there? You might need that body cam. Okay, no comments or anything? I know it's been a long night and I appreciate everyone sticking around. But if there's nothing?
No, I actually do.
Oh, bitch.
For the first time ever.
Bitch, you're killing me.
An actual thing. The gentleman mentioned his phone number live, or like through the microphone, so I'm going to redact that. So you are aware.
You can't?
No, no, the gentleman who gave, who had a question about his taxes, when he gave Mike his phone number, he sent it into the mic, so I'm redacting that. I just didn't know if it had to be official, like for me to like redact the video, so.
That's probably great catch.
So.
Because he probably doesn't want that.
That's what I figured.
All right. No one has anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Thanks to my Rick Soller, all in favor of adjournment say aye. Aye, aye. Again, thank you, everyone.